Moving on to two panels involving the economic fraud amendments. The first panel consists of practitioners, and I want to remind, in case you weren't here, about our red light system, so please don't read your statement, and at some point the hook comes, so, and then we're a very active group, so we'll jump in at the end of all of the presentations. We begin with the Honorable Benjamin B. Wagner, who's the U.S. Attorney for the Eastern District of California. He previously served as Chief of the Special Prosecutions Unit, which is responsible for prosecutions of public corruption, financial fraud, tax evasion, and corporate fraud. Michael Caruso has been the federal public defender for the Southern District of Florida since 2012. He joined the office in 1997. Eric Terschwell is the, did I say that right?
Yes.
Good. Is the Vice Chair for the Practitioners Advisory Group. He is a partner at Kramer Levin, and his practice focuses on white-collar criminal defense and related litigation. And Catherine M. Foti is the Chair of the Sentencing Guidelines Committee for the New York Council of Defense Lawyers. She's a partner at Morevilo and at Bromowitz. Welcome to everybody. We begin with Mr. Wagner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here this morning. I appreciate the opportunity. It's also, as one of the earlier speakers said, it's my first time to the rodeo, so I appreciate being here. As Your Honor mentioned, I've been the U.S. Attorney in the Eastern District of California for a little over five years. Prior to that, I was an Assistant U.S. Attorney in the office for about 17 years, including nine years as a supervisor. So in that time period, I have handled a lot of different types of economic crimes, all types of crimes, but investment frauds, tax evasions, federal program fraud, and of course, I've supervised a lot of people who have handled those kind of cases. The Eastern District of California covers about 50% of the area of the state of California. We have about 8 million residents. In case there's anyone from Congress listening, we really need more judges. We have about 90 Assistant U.S. Attorney authorized positions where what, within the department, is categorized as a large district. Over the last five years, we have prosecuted a wide variety of economic crimes cases, particularly heavy in the mortgage fraud area. We were very hard hit by that. Over the last five years, we have convicted something in excess of 230 defendants in mortgage fraud cases, and those are a wide variety of types of conduct. Some of them are cases which targeted financial institutions, and so those tend to be smaller numbers of victims, but large dollar amounts. Other types of cases were a huge number of victims targeting distressed homeowners, foreclosure rescue schemes, that sort of thing, often smaller dollar amounts, but very profound impact on a large number of victims. We also have charged and resolved a lot of investment fraud scheme cases over the last few years. We just finished sentencing, I think, what is the largest Ponzi scheme in the history of the Sacramento area. It ran for about 10 years. The defendant fleeced his victims, net loss of about $108 million. We had a similar case last year involving a larger number of victims and about $45 million in loss. In my brief comments to start this morning, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. Obviously, the submission by the department was quite voluminous. I just wanted to touch on two or three issues. The first is, I'm quite concerned that the amendments as a whole, taken as a whole, will create a considerable confusion and difficulty in the sentencing of financial fraud cases under 2B 1.1, and may sow the seeds of error for appeal, and are going to cause considerable difficulty for judges, practitioners, and probation officers. And the specific problem that I'm concerned about has to do with a kind of Balkanized way in which the, in the course of the sentencing proceedings, you have to evaluate the defendant's conduct in different ways, in different parts of 2B 1.1. Under the relevant conduct rules generally, and the amendment that's proposed today, which we generally support, to 1B 1.3, of course, you consider the defendant's conduct and all acts and omissions of others that were within the scope of the activity that the defendant jointly agreed to undertake, were in furtherance of that activity, and were reasonably foreseeable to the defendant. So that would be the general, obviously, the general rule as you go through 2B 1.1. But under the amendments, under the proposed amendment, the intended loss, that would be determined by what the defendant purposely sought to inflict, the losses that he would, he or she purposely sought to inflict. And I'm concerned that that is looking at the same sort of conduct, but looking at it through a different lens. And then when you get to the sophisticated means proposal, 2B 1.1b10, that the lens there, under the proposed amendment, is that the sophisticated means would only apply to that conduct in which the defendant aided, abetted, counsel commanded, induced, procured, or willfully caused that conduct which is sophisticated. So my concern is that it puts, sentencing is already fairly complex in large significant cases under 2B 1.1, and you essentially have to slice the conduct three different ways under three different standards. And that is going to create, I think, tremendous confusion in the course of the sentencing of those cases. I wanted to say just a moment, I see my yellow light is on, I just wanted to say just briefly about the fraud on the market proposal, which is, and I can elaborate this in greater detail as we go on with the panel, but it seems to me that that is a proposal designed to address a very small number of cases, definitely significant cases, large cases, and there may be important ways in which we need to look at those large cases, but it's a policy that is intended to target a very small number of cases, but I think will create mischief in a much larger number of cases, as many other types of defendants who are not strictly fraud on the market defendants are going to attempt to get within the scope of that proposal of using gain rather than loss. I noted that in the end of Mr. Feldman's statement for the next panel, I think on the very last page of his statement, he made the point that there's really no principal distinction between the fraud on the market cases and other types of cases, and that he believes that gain should generally be used in fraud cases. I think that's a widespread view among defense counsel, and I think there are going to be a lot of ways in which they are going to argue to sentencing judges that they ought to go to this new proposal, that their offense, even if it's not strictly fraud on the market, is analogous to it, that they should get the benefit of that. And so I think it's going to create issues that are much broader than the narrow set of cases that it was intended to address, and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caruso.
Thank you, Judge. I first wanted to start by thanking the Commission for soliciting the defender's views on this important subject, and personally inviting me to speak and join the conversation. As you know, economic crimes constitute a significant part of the federal court's docket and a significant portion of all federal public defender's offices' caseload, where the public perception may be that these are strictly white-collar crimes and white-collar offenders, and that the federal public defender focuses on drugs and guns and immigration. Nothing could be further from the truth. Day in and day out, all over the country, and specifically in the Southern District of Florida, where I'm from, our lawyers are dealing with a heavy caseload of economic crimes. And based on our experience with 2B 1.1, given that our clients are the largest consumers of that guideline in the federal system, and also based on the statistics that the Commission has generated, our belief is that this guideline is not properly calibrated. If you look at first the statistics, you see that for a vast majority of the cases, the within guideline sentences being imposed by federal judges are very low. For the vast majority of cases, the statistics seem to indicate that the within guideline rate is 35%. I don't think any reasonable person could say that that's a properly calibrated guideline. We also know that from seeing the extent of the variance in the vast majority of cases, whereas the numbers may be clearer at the high end. If you look at the percentages, you see, again, for the vast majority of cases, federal judges are varying from this guideline at a rate of 19% to 24% in cases involving $30,000 in loss to $1 million. So whereas at the low end, a sentence reduction of two months, or four months, or six months in the abstract doesn't seem significant, when you look at the percentage, I think that demonstrates that the extent of the variances are significant. And our position, of course, is that, you know, any extra day in prison that doesn't need to be served should not be served because of the enormous impact that prison has on our clients individually and their families. But it also has a practical effect, because even at the low end, when you're talking about a reduction of two, four, or six months, you're talking about the decision as to whether to put a person in prison solely, just prison time, versus giving that person a split sentence. So for example, it's a difference between in Zone D, where there has to be a term of imprisonment, compared to being in a lower zone, where there could be a straight probation or a split sentence. So I think the Commission needs to focus on the impact of the variance rate and the extent of the variances at the lower ends, and I think you will come to the conclusion that the guideline is not properly calibrated. That being said, we believe that the Commission's proposal all move in the right direction, except for the Commission's decision not to tackle the lost table head-on. But the other proposals that the Commission has set forth all move in the direction of basing a sentence on a person's individual culpability. So if we look to inflate, the inflationary adjustments, stealing $5,000 today is much different than stealing $5,000 in 1987. That's just, that's just a fact of life. If we look at, if we look at the sophisticated means proposal, we would like that proposal limited to sophisticated conduct that was caused by the defendant. There seems to be no rational punishment policy for punishing a person more severely just because of the happenstance that he or she align themselves with clever criminals. We should focus on the, we should focus in meeting out punishment on the person's own conduct. We think also the victim's proposal moves in the right direction. We would suggest a modification. We would suggest an elimination of the victim's table and a replacement with the substantial financial hardship question, because again, there's a problem, in our view, with the victim's table, in that it overlaps with the lost table. It's duplicative. And we think it gets to a much better answer with regard to a person's moral culpability and responsibility, to focus on the substantial financial hardship that that person has caused. And we would limit it, we would limit it to financial hardship. You know, we think the guidelines already account in a departure provision for non-financial hardship, and we believe that if non-financial hardship was included, that would actually have the impact of raising sentences in this area because of the cumulative effect of the victim's table and the hardship question. And we don't think, at this point in time, when sentences are already too long, that the Commission should be moving toward raising sentences. With regard to intended loss, again, I think that's a move toward focusing on a person's personal culpability. You know, we've cited a number of cases in our materials of rather extensive conspiracies. We cited a telemarketing fraud case, but we have it in the healthcare field, the mortgage fraud field, and the securities field, where the crimes are being perpetrated in an office setting with a large number of people, and people at the lower end, who are essentially performing as functionaries, are drawing a limited salary, but because the people at the high end of the hierarchy are intending a greater loss, they're not only getting hit with sophisticated means or a victim's adjustment, but they're also getting an intended loss adjustment up from actual loss. So we think, again, the Commission's proposals are moving in the right direction, focusing on an individual's culpability in determining what prison sentence they should serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, and on behalf of the Practitioners Advisory Group, for which, as I said, I serve as Vice Chair, I want to thank everybody on the Commission for the opportunity to address you this morning. We strive to provide the perspective of those in the private sector who represent individuals and organizations charged under the federal criminal laws. Perhaps not surprisingly, economic crimes are for many of us a large, if not the largest portion of our dockets, so we are especially appreciative of your willingness to listen to us and consider our thoughts this morning. In our written testimony, we have reiterated our abiding belief that, which we've expressed on numerous occasions to the Commission, that instead of proposing what we respectfully submit are only modest adjustments, the Commission should undertake a more wholesale revision of the fraud and related economic crimes guidelines. That said, and notwithstanding our continuing hope that at some point the Commission will consider such larger-scale revisions, we are here this morning to applaud you all for the proposals that we're discussing today. We do believe that these proposals at least begin the hard work of moving toward a sentencing framework for economic crimes that takes greater account of many non-loss-centric considerations, which I think we've been advocating should be elevated in the sentencing considerations. So what I thought I'd do is focus on two particular issues where I think we've made some fairly concrete proposals. The first is the victim's table, and in particular, we agree with the Commission's decision to try to reduce the impact of the enhancement for victim numerosity standing alone. We believe where no victim has been substantially harmed, the loss enhancement in subsection B1 sufficiently captures the magnitude of the harm caused by the fraud. So we have endorsed the Commission's suggestion raised in the first issue for comment to limit the victims, the impact of the victim's table, where no victims were, in fact, substantially harmed by the offense. Our proposal is that the Commission do so by eliminating the current subsection B2 entirely, which enhances, as you know, based solely on numerosity without regard for substantial harm. And we've advocated instead replacing it with the new proposed subsection B3, option 2, which as laid out provides for the enhancement if and only if the offense resulted in substantial hardship to at least one victim. We think that by making substantial harm to even a single victim, the trigger or the initial aggravator, and then providing for additional enhancements where larger numbers of victims suffered substantial harms, option 2 will adequately account for victim impact aggravators not already captured in the loss calculation in B1, but will eliminate, or at least substantially reduce, some of the double-counting and redundancy problems that have been identified and talked about in decisions of the current subsection B2. And the second issue I wanted to talk about briefly was, is the fraud on the market proposal. We endorse the Commission's suggestion that all fraud on the market cases be sentenced under section 2B 1.4, and that's sort of a broader potential change than some of the proposals suggest, but we see many benefits to moving these kinds of cases to 2B 1.4. 2B 1.4 already relies on gain rather than loss, which, as we understand what the Commission seems to be expressing at this point, is something that has been recognized as, as a place where some movement in fraud on the cases is warranted. We don't think 2B 1.4 would require dramatic modification to bring in these fraud on the market cases. The lengthy list of specific offender characteristics set out in 2B 1.1 are largely inapplicable in fraud on the market cases, so we don't think there would be a need to sort of wholesale import or cross-reference those specific offense characteristics. There are a couple that may be applicable in fraud on the market cases. We mentioned in our written testimony, 2B 1.1b19, which relates to defendants who are officers, directors, registered persons, or bestment advisors, that certainly seems like it would apply. And there may be one or two other provisions, but for the most part, we think that moving these cases over to 2B 1.4 would really simplify and really better capture the new proposed focus on gain. We are concerned, and we noted this in our testimony, that the proposal as written is too narrow. It applies, as proposed, only to cases of the submission of false information in public filing, and we've suggested that that should be expanded to include misleading disclosures or material omissions. Many of the fraud on the market cases involve not necessarily affirmatively false information, so that's one suggestion that we've made. And we've also raised concerns about the proposed floor that the Commission has laid out. We didn't see any persuasive explanation for why a floor would be necessary, and so while we agree that relying on loss in fraud on the market cases should be set aside, we think that replacing it with sort of what looks like an irrebuttably presumed baseline amount of gain, without any real basis or explanation for where that comes from, would re-inject some arbitrariness into the offense-level calculation. So we're strongly urging the Commission not to impose any floor if this change is made. So thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Foti.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge Saris, and distinguished members of the Commission. So I have the benefit of going last, which allows me to echo what my panel, the two defense attorneys on this panel have said. It is interesting, I think, that the three defense attorneys here all really have the same position, and I think we have lengthy testimonies that is very similar, some differences. But the NYCDL's position is that there's still significant problems with the economic crime guidelines, and we really think we should start over again. And the, in particular, we support the ABA Task Force report that you will hear about in the next panel, but that report basically says, let's look at this, and let's just try a different way of approaching the problem of economic crimes. Again, I think the fact that three panelists here with extensive experience in criminal defense have echoed the problems that defendants are facing with these guidelines is significant and something I would hope the Commission really takes to heart. Specifically, what we are hoping is for an approach to the economic crimes that we defend, which is much more particularized, much more focused on individual defendants' culpability. Specifically, on the intended loss provision, we do recommend something beyond, I think, what some of the panelists recommend, which is basically get rid of the concept of intended loss. It's very speculative, but understanding that we're not there, and that we are dealing with what we understand to be keeping intended loss, we appreciate the steps that the Commission has taken to try to ameliorate some of the problems in that situation. We specifically would support the first option that you've suggested in terms of amending intended loss, and that first option goes along with the theme we want to present today, which is individual liability. And that first option really would focus on individual defendant's liability. We would not be in favor of considering members of the conspiracies' liability in determining a sentence for an individual defendant. We think that's incredibly difficult, that is complicated, and puts the defendant really in a difficult position to try to counter the government's allegations as what another person's subjective intent is. On the victim's table, we also would recommend doing away with the victim's table. We think the harm that the victim's table attempts to address is covered by the lost table, is covered by the significant number of specific adjustments underneath the 2B 1.1, and is really unnecessary. That said, we would support the specific proposal, which is option 2, again, which is more of a tiered approach. We think that, again, is taking small steps towards an individual defendant's culpability. And in addition, on sophisticated means enhancement, we recommend that, we recommend that the Commission amend the enhancement to specify that it applies, as it has suggested, to the defendant's own conduct, and focuses on the same kind of offense that defendant is accused of. Now, on fraud on the market, now, the NYCDL believes that the 2012 amendments to the guidelines for economic crimes did not properly address the issues with fraud on the market. So we do support using 2B 1.4 as the guideline, similar to what Mr. Terschwell has suggested. We believe that is conceptually similar, because that's dealing with insider trading, and the issues are conceptually similar to fraud on the market cases. Also, we believe that the lack of the very specific offense characteristics make that, make that guideline much easier to apply, much easier to deal with in fraud on the market cases. What we would suggest, and we say in our testimony, is that if we do use 2B 1.4 for fraud on the market cases, that that guideline comes with a presumption of sophisticated means, given the fact that there is a suggestion that sophisticated means be amended to focus more specifically on individual's conduct, that there be an additional adjustment placed under 2B 1.4 that would focus on whether or not there was in fact sophisticated means in use in a particular case. There certainly could be fraud on the market cases where the individual defendant did not use sophisticated means. Generally, the NYCDL believes that reliance on either loss or gain does not properly account for culpability of defendants. Notwithstanding that, we think the suggestion that gain be used in connection with fraud on the market cases is in fact a good suggestion, and we would support that. And in connection with the issue about adjustment for inflation, we certainly would support that, and we would suggest that that be implemented every four years. Again, on behalf of the NYCDL, I thank you very much for inviting me here today, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Can I, I'm gonna start with a letter the Department of Justice sent us, literally three years ago, I noted, it's March 12, 2012, and...
I'm sure I haven't read that letter.
And it basically...
You'll get it ready.
It says, "The Department has also observed that the impact of the loss and victim tables in securities fraud cases involving fraudulent statements to the market can sometimes be disproportionate, and that as a result, some sentencing courts are departing downward dramatically from the guidelines." That refrain was echoed at the symposium at the John Jay. In fact, it was because of all the stakeholders, including the Department of Justice, that we actually started engaging in this multi-year study. The table, which is on the web and everyone's seen before, starts showing the dramatic departures at about a million. As the defenders point out, there's some before that, but the dramatic stuff happens over a million. So I'm trying to figure out what, the Department of Justice doesn't like a lot of our proposals or the suggestions. What are you proposing to deal with this?
So I think the issues here, as I suggested in my opening statement, the number of cases at the very high end are very, very small. I think in, in that data, I think it reflects something like 56 cases out of, in 2012, out of 8,500 defendants sentenced under 2B 1.1, only 56 involved loss amounts of over $50 million. So I don't think we have a serious disagreement that there is a tweak of some sort that is needed to address some of these cases at the high end. Not every one of these cases is overvalued at the high end. We had a mortgage fraud case recently in my district, in which the defendant was sentenced to 35 years in prison by Judge Mueller, who's appointed by this president, not known as a very severe sentencer, but that was a case in which the loss amount was tremendous, there was a huge amount of victims, very predatory behavior, just the worst kind of white-collar type of case you can imagine. So not every high-dollar case, I think, is necessarily over, overscored by the guidelines, but there probably are some. I think there was an interesting proposal in Mr. Bowman's submission, which I think the Commission should consider about collapsing the top four levels in the loss table, and looking at whether or not you should end it at everything over $20 million, that it's 22 levels, and that that's your cap. I'm not necessarily saying that's the right thing to do, but I think that is certainly worth...
That's a tweak worth considering.
That's a tweak worth considering. It is a tweak worth considering, and I, so it's not that there isn't something that should be done here. I think with the fraud on the market proposal, the language that was just put in... I think with the fraud on the market proposal, the language that was just put in in 2012 on the downward departure seems to be being utilized, and I think we ought to give that a chance. Our concern really is about sort of that this fix is, in my view, going to create more problems than it solves, which isn't to say there isn't a problem that needs some attention.
So I have two questions. Mr. Caruso, you talked a lot about how the guidelines treat jointly undertaken activity. And as I'm sure you know, there's a long history in the law and the model penal code and in the guidelines for dealing with jointly undertaken activity. The commission is considering a proposal to address that, in particular, this amendment year, and part of relevant conduct is designed to limit the exposure of a person for jointly undertaken activity. Your testimony suggests that, at least for sophisticated means and intended loss, that we should eliminate all responsibility for activities of others that were part of jointly undertaken activity. So for example, and tell me if I have the testimony wrong, so if somebody is involved in some sort of fraud that involves sophisticated hacking and hires a person to do that programming and hacking, that the individual who did the hiring should not be held responsible because that individual person did not engage in sophisticated means. So that's one question, if you could address that. And then to Mr. Terschwell and Ms. Foddy, you spoke about fraud on the market and using the insider trading guideline. There was a directive that came from Congress in the Dodd-Frank Act, which told the commission to focus on the harms, on the actual and possible harms that are done to victims and the market. Do you think it's consistent with that directive for the commission to have a sentencing scheme that focuses on the gain and on the perpetrator rather than on the victims?
Thank you, Commissioner. First, I would disagree with your premise. The defenders don't view the jointly undertaken activity portion of the guideline as a limiting principle. You know, in our experience collectively and in my experience individually, the jointly undertaking activity component of the guideline sweeps in a broad array of conduct and increases punishment for our clients, as opposed to limiting it. And our proposal, you know, drafting upon the commission's proposal, is to limit punishment for those who actually caused the harms, as opposed to sweeping in those who, for whatever reason, associated themselves with the people who created the harms. So for example, in your hacking example, I don't believe the defenders would have any issue with both of those persons being held accountable for sophisticated means. The person who designed the scheme and the person who caused the hacking activity. You know, what we're looking to limit the sophisticated means adjustment is to those people who willfully caused the sophistication. So if this is hacking activity and there are other participants, so perhaps the computer that's being used to commit the hacking breaks, but the hacker has a DUI, so he can't drive, and he's going to draw the line in committing criminal conduct at that point. So he needs someone to drive him to the computer store, and he hires our client. And our client knows he's engaged in this hacking activity, drops him off at the computer store, brings him back to pick up the computer. That person, we believe, had no part in willfully causing the sophistication, although he's participated in the conduct and is going to be sent to prison for that activity. We think the commission should, we think the commission should draw the line by increasing punishment only for those who willfully caused the sophistication.
Mr. Caruso, is it the better way to get it consistent with the manual as a whole to focus on role, greater role reductions for that individual? Because the drug courier case, the person carrying the 200 pounds across the border is part of a larger conspiracy and can be, depending on the facts, held responsible for the larger drug rates. But yet he did just one importation. And so isn't the better approach, consistent with the first principles in our manual, to work on role for those folks, minimal role, perhaps?
I would love to get minimal role in that case, Your Honor, but our experience shows that we don't get minimal role.
Should the commission be focused on getting at that problem from the role provision, as opposed to the sophisticated means, because of the way the guidelines are designed with relevant conduct?
You know, I believe that because the loss table is the primary driver of this guideline, it's not sufficient to ameliorate the harshness of the guideline by looking to another section of the guideline. I mean, I think there is a real reason within the fraud guideline that the commission wants to set a guideline and judges want to punish more severely those who create a sophisticated scheme for the reasons that have been, you know, addressed by the commission earlier. But I think the problem has to be addressed within the guideline because people are going to get the upward adjustment. So it's only fair if people are getting the upward adjustment under the guideline. If they didn't do anything to willfully cause the sophistication, they shouldn't then get it only to be deducted out later on, because to them, in practical terms, it's not a benefit. They get the two levels up for sophistication, and then they get it, you know, back in a minor role reduction. They're still left at the same level, and we don't think that takes care of the issue.
Commissioner Barco and then Commissioner Brusco.
So this is just on that same point. I guess I'm not quite sure. So normally in the law, we don't think about somebody causing someone else to do something, right? That's just not foundational criminal law, so we use aiding and abetting, right? We just don't. So if we were to use your suggestion on page 15, and I think this gets at what Commissioner Rapluzki was asking, there'd be a conflict with all the rest of criminal law in the sense that, you know, I can't cause you to do something. That's not how we do it. And so I'm wondering if it would address what you had just said if we talked about intentionally aiding and abetting such conduct, right? If we had that same idea, instead of saying causing, but you are intentionally aiding and abetting the conduct of the hacker. Because I'm not so sure causality, that would be a whole new concept for criminal law, since we don't normally think of one person causing some other person to do something. We've always used aiding and abetting. And so I just don't know how adopting this proposal might actually play itself out in the courts. And I'm wondering what you think about instead saying intentionally aiding and abetting, or willfully doing it.
I think willfully aiding and abetting is better than what is being proposed. But I would disagree with you in the sense that, you know, I think the substantive criminal law and what we're doing in sentencing, they're different concepts, as you know. And I think there are provisions in the guideline, you know, especially in, you know, the upward role adjustment scenario, where people are held accountable for directing others to do something. So I view, if I hire you to do something, if I say to you, listen, I have this great scheme, but I don't know how quite to execute it, so I want to hire you to do this hacking job, will you do it? In my view, that is causation, you know, because you're entering into an agreement with that person to cause the hacking activity, whether you want to call it. I would say it gets closer to directing as opposed to aiding and abetting. My hesitancy in agreeing to any aiding and abetting language is then that sweeps in the driver that's taking the hacker to fix the computer, because that is aiding and abetting. He's intentionally doing it, and I don't think that person, it serves no rationale for punishment to punish the mere driver or errand runner for participating in a scheme that someone else made complex, in my view.
But that driver's only going to be swept in if it's part of the jointly undertaken activity, as defined by the commission, and the commission is likely to make that clear, that there has to be an agreement. It has to be part of the agreement. So he's only going to be held liable if he knows what's going on, he's agreeing to the whole enterprise, and so forth.
But in my example, he meets that criteria, and we see this not only in your hacking example, but in healthcare fraud. You know, my office represented a woman who became, you know, a nominee owner of a healthcare clinic. All she did was sign her name to a piece of paper. And then her function in the healthcare fraud was to drive the real owner of the fraud around town, because that person couldn't drive. At sentencing, our client got held accountable for every loss the healthcare clinic caused, sophisticated means, and the victim enhancement. And in our view, since she was a mere functionary in this criminal activity and her punishment was driven overwhelmingly by the loss, we think that the line should be drawn there, and she shouldn't be held accountable for victim's enhancement or sophisticated means, even though she aided and abetted the crime.
Judge Breyer?
Mr. Wagner, let me start out in the area of agreement. I certainly agree with you that your district is overwhelmed by the number of cases. It actually is the district that leads the United States in cases per judge and has for a number of years. And so I have no, I wish I could do more to assist in getting judicial resources to your district. You do a fine job.
He's complaining of coming down visiting.
I would actually, with the Eastern District. It's a wonderful district, and they are overwhelmed. But I wanted to, I've been intrigued, because I sort of had one idea about the victim's table, that by virtue of the testimony that's been submitted, I'm now trying to rethink it. And especially in light of what happened in New York in the symposium, where the victims' group got up and said, look, you're measuring the wrong thing here. You're measuring numerosity. You're not measuring impact. And impact is really, when you go back to the very fundamentals of the guidelines, the guidelines when they were set up was to measure harm. And so harm may be characterized by numbers, but it's not necessarily the case that you have harmed, caused that much greater harm by having 1,000 victims who lose a dollar than 10 victims who lose a lesser amount, or the same amount, but cumulatively the same amount. So I'm interested, from a prosecutor's point of view, what if we were to change that victim? What if we were to say, look, let's get rid of the victim's table? In one sense, that is, we simply won't count the victims. But we will count the victims who have received, whatever you want to say, substantial harm, individual harm, significant harm. If we look at it that way, does that in any way impact, though I also understand that you have the general argument and the general objection that we're making things more complicated? I'm sympathetic to that, to one, at one level. But I'm also mindful of the fact that sentencing is individualized. The Congress of the United States, in the statute, and the Supreme Court has said that we must give an individualized sentence. So the fact that judges may have to work harder or make distinctions is not discouraging, at least to this judge, to engage in that enterprise. I understand that. But from a prosecutor's point of view, I'd like to know, if we were to reconfigure the victim's table in a way that measures harm caused to that particular victim, does that make any difference, or would it impede your ability to prosecute? Or on the other hand, would it be more gratifying or satisfying to a prosecutor to know that if somebody has been substantially harmed by, even though it may be a smaller number of people, court's going to take that into consideration?
One area in which we, I think, agree with a lot of our co-panelists is our support for Option 2 in the victim adjustment. And I think it's terrific that the Sentencing Commission is considering introducing the concept of looking at the substantial harm that is done, the serious harm. So I think that is a big step forward, and we support that. We don't support the idea of sort of doing away with the numerosity, with the quantity, as well as the quality, sort of, of the harm that is done. I don't agree that the counting victims is duplicative of counting the loss amount. In the mortgage fraud type of cases, for example, in a $10 million case, it's quite a different situation, where that $10 million was extracted from three banks versus 300 desperate homeowners. And I think for that reason, you can't just say, well, they're both $10 million cases. And I think there, what I like about Option 2 is it looks both at the breadth of the conduct, the number of victims, and sort of the depth of it, were they substantially harmed? And I think all of those are relevant considerations for the court. The one thing, as a practical matter, since that's what you're asking about, that we suggested as a tweak to Option 2, which I really would advocate, is the top level in the proposal for substantial harm is at 25 victims. And as a prosecutor, if I'm preparing that case for sentencing, you don't know which 25 victims the court may agree are ones that suffered substantial harm. So you've got to work up maybe 30, 40 victims and, you know, sort of present facts relating to all of those different victims to the court, so that you have a decent shot of hitting your 25. And I think that's an awful, and I agree that just because sentencing is hard doesn't mean it's not important for the courts to do. But I think it may needlessly add an extra layer of difficulty for probation officers and the courts and the practitioners to sort of litigate, you know, 40 different cases of how hard were you harmed? And it ought to be capped at about 10, in which it both measures the substantial harm but doesn't impose sort of an incremental additional burden on everybody.
Do you think we ought to expand the term of harm to include non-financial harm? That is to say, you may have in an identity theft case, you may have a person who didn't lose a dollar, but now must spend the next two or three years trying to sort out their credit record and trying to get financial assistance. So as a matter of analysis, it's going to be very hard to quantify it, but it's not hard to qualify it.
Right. I do support that. And I think one of the things that has been, I think it has been a welcome trend that courts have increasingly, because of victims' rights legislation and so on, that the harm done to the victims has assumed an increasingly important part in sentencing. But one thing that has been undervalued, I think, is the harm that results from these sorts of crimes that are not necessarily measured by, well, your cashier's check that was stolen was for $3,000 or whatever. There's a lot of consequences that deserve a place in there. So I, we support the idea of it not being limited to financial harm. Now, one thing that I will say, and so in that respect, we agree with the Victims Advisory Group. But one thing that I would caution, however, that we disagree with the Victim Advisory Group, is they had a suggestion to have sort of five different levels of harm, of substantial harm, significant harm, life-altering harm, and then two levels if it's in between those, a five different level swing. That, to me, imposes a tremendous burden in trying to litigate between somewhere, well, you suffered significant harm, but it wasn't really substantial, and trying to measure this person what they felt was significant, that person was substantial. That really complicates things. And I understand it's well-intended, but I think it doesn't add substantially to the general Option 2 as it exists, which is just measuring harm, which I think should include non-financial.
I have one other question, if I can. On the loss on the market, fraud on the market, if you can't successfully measure loss, that is to say scientifically, it's simply too uncertain to measure. Yet gain, in a particular case, may be easier to use. Would you say that that would be a satisfactory alternative?
I think it is certainly...
Or a preferable one?
Certainly in individual cases, if it is really impossible to measure loss, and there may well be cases like that, then in that case, starting with gain and saying, well, let's look at the gain, I think it may not, depending on the case, it may be a somewhat reasonable proxy to start with, or it may not be. As a general matter, what I'm concerned about with the fraud on the market proposal is that it carves out a subsection of fraud cases where you're looking at gain, as opposed to every other fraud case. And there doesn't seem to me a sort of a principal distinction why these particular cases should be looking at gain, except that it's their high dollar and that it's very complicated.
Thank you. Judge Breyer?
So, Mr. Wagner, I noticed in the limited time that you had, you did not address inflationary adjustments, but I take it you're here to defend the department's position on that issue?
I'll do my best.
Good luck. I found it singularly unpersuasive, and I'm having a hard time understanding how it advances either just desserts or... how it advances either just desserts or crime control to say that punishment should increase by operation of inflation. How can that be?
So inflation, obviously, is a fact of life. It affects across the board, sentences, fines, penalty assessments, et cetera. Congress hasn't taken any action to, to index those other factors to inflation. They haven't, to my knowledge, asked the commission.
We're not proposing indexing. I, I noticed that you're, 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 you know, the letter says Congress hasn't seen fit to index for inflation. This, this is, for the first time in nearly 30 years, deciding to adjust the loss table to account for inflation. That, that's very different from an annual indexing for inflation.
Right, right. It seems to me, um, a, a little bit of an odd thing when Congress hasn't taken any action or, or, to my knowledge, asked the commission to do this. There doesn't seem to be, aside from the, I, I don't at all dispute the, the effect of inflation over time, but we're talking about factors that have nothing to do with the defendants, with the offense conduct, with 35-53 factors. This is sort of a totally extraneous consideration, which would result in a trimming of the loss tables, effectively the, the sentencing effect. And it seems af, after 30 years, in a period of historically low inflation, a, a somewhat odd thing to do at this point. If I could just make two points, though. If the commission doesn't accept.
Listen, I'm puzzled by all of that. I bet you, go ahead.
If, if the commission does go forward with, with a, an inflation adjustment, I, I would have two, two observations. One is, I, I think, um, if it does, then it's, I, I think there's no principled reason not to do it for fines, that if you're going to do it for loss.
There's ex post facto concerns there.
Well, and, and there, and there are other concerns, which I think were pointed out.
But that, that don't operate in the loss table.
Well, um, not for, I mean, for new offenses, for somebody who, who commits an offense now.
Well, you would have to account for that. You would have to account for when the crime was committed.
Yes, yes.
But that's, that's, that is different, materially different than with the loss table.
For those, for that time period where you're talking about cases that have been, you know, crimes that have been committed.
We're talking about increases.
As of the date, but not yet sentenced, certainly in that bubble, as with a lot of adjustments by the commission. The, the other factor, which I think was pointed out by the Probation Officers Advisory Group, is that at the high end of the fine table, you, uh, if you adjust for inflation, you go over the statutory maximum for an individual for a single count, which then creates a situation where the high-dollar exposure people get a break by virtue of the cap that, that others don't. The, the only other thing I would add is that I know that the proposal was made to do this every four years, and, and I'm concerned that that would create a lot of instability and delay in the system. I know that.
I think the proposal alone is only that it would be considered every four years.
And, and if I were a defense attorney and I was three years between, I would do everything I could to stall my sentencing until that next time to see if my guy was going to get a break.
Well, in this period of historically low inflation, it wouldn't really make much of a difference, would it?
It might, it might not. Certainly, certainly today, it probably wouldn't, but.
Don't you think, though, that this has something to do with the commission's obligation to reduce unwarranted disparities?
Yes, but.
That's one of the 35-53 A factors, isn't it?
Sure. And I think the commission has looked at.
So how can it, how can it be that, how can it be that someone who was sentenced 30 years ago should get effectively, uh, a lower sentence for the same crime that someone today commits and that, where Congress and the commission have not adopted any kind of, of new policy, but the, but the person today who commits essentially the same crime, but by operation of, of inflation is now going to get a harsher sentence? That, that's, that's an unwarranted disparity, isn't it?
There are dollar amounts throughout Title 18 for lots of different amounts and thresholds.
Yeah, but I mean, when Congress does that, it's doing a broad range. And, and it's not saying it can't be revisited, right? But we, we have a much narrower range for setting a guideline range, right? That ought to account for these kinds of, you know, contemporary concerns in a way that a large, wide statutory range does not. Isn't that right?
I, I think it probably is, although the, the commission has had, has had the opportunity and has looked generally at the loss table for a lot of reasons over the years and has, for whatever reason, not adjusted them downward. And doing it this way as kind of a inflationary haircut, I think is not, I, I, I don't, I don't really see the, the, I mean, inflation, it seems to me, is a fact of life. It has been for 30 years.
But what's wrong with it? I mean, you, you may not like the way we're doing it. And I, I was equally puzzled by, by the Justice Department's response. But what's wrong with it? Yeah, I mean, you're not, you're not saying when Congress passed these, you know, passed on the loss table years ago, years ago, they thought, "This is great because now we're capturing these people and guess what? We're going to capture more people over time because inflation generally goes up over time." They didn't, they didn't contemplate that it would never be changed.
I, maybe not. I, I don't, I don't think Congress has expressed an issue on this.
They haven't expressed a view, but why is, why wouldn't they equally think that the Sentencing Commission, who is, who is looking at this all the time and who is, is instructed by Congress to make appropriate amendments as circumstances warranted it, why wouldn't they think, "This is your job"? Well, they don't want to have to look at it all the time.
Right.
I mean, I don't understand why the Justice Department doesn't even recognize that. You ought to embrace this position, not reject it.
Well, I, there may, there may be, well, good reasons for looking at the, the loss tables and adjusting them, as I suggested at the outset, particularly at the high level. So it's not, it's not that they should be frozen for all time. I, I, I just think introducing this concept after 30 years.
50 years instead of 30?
Commissioner Fager?
Yeah. Mr. Wagner, just following up on this. If the commission were to take this action and adjust for inflation, don't the defenders have a point that the year we should use as, as a benchmark is 1987, given that the commission, either the commission or Congress has ever explicitly addressed inflation? Um, yes, there've been other amendments to, to be 1.1 over time, but given that this has never been an issue, aren't there proportionality concerns and other reasons why we should go back to 1987 and be uniform to the extent we do this at all?
I, I, I mean, I, I think it should be uniform. I, I don't really have a, an opinion as to what the starting point should be, but.
Can I, can I ask one question, just on this? I, I have the same puzzling reaction. This has been fun. So I, I'm, I'm just wondering, is it, is the Department of Justice of the view that we're doing this as a backhanded way to lower loss? Because that's not what this proposal is. And so I'm just kind of, I'm just wondering if, if, if I could state it that this is a good government suggestion that applies, as you can see, across a range of places in the whole manual, that has never accounted for the passage of time. And so we have decades now of money, you know, I, I wish I could have, like, it doesn't make any sense to me, just as a matter of governance, to not account for inflation. So I guess if you took it outside the loss table box and thought about it more generally, government still is, is opposed to the idea?
Well, I, you know, I, I'm not questioning the commission's motives in doing that. I'm just, I'm just saying.
Well, you said it was a haircut on loss.
Well, that's, that's the effect of it. I think that's the effect of it. From a prosecutor's standpoint, you're going to take people who were sentenced at one level last month and then get a lower sentence next month by virtue of, of this kind of, so that's the effect.
We shouldn't do anything. Only, only, we, we could only, by that logic, that's a government's logic. We just shouldn't do anything at all.
No, I, as I've said, there may be, there may be good reasons to revisit the loss table and particularly certain areas of it. But in, in general, I mean, in Title 18 and the criminal justice system, you know, it's not like the, sort of the Social Security Administration where they are dealing constantly with these types of issues. Generally, it, it's a policy matter. Congress sets these policies, uh, and it has not been an area where they have generally adjusted things.
But it is interesting that the last time they looked at it was right before the commission was founded. I mean, you know, they thought about this in 1987 and then, you know, here we are. It, it seems temporally that the thought is there's an agency that can account for it.
So let me jump for a minute to the defense, since we've got three sitting here. As you can tell.
We're doing okay.
Always know when you're winning the argument. Let me, let me say, we have struggled a lot with fraud on the market. That was a prime, the, the judges in New York have been struggling with that issue. We've struggled with it and to come up with, it's, it's hard to calculate loss. And we put out there a proposal possibly to consider gain, but by your referencing it, no one sort of has, has, actually, I think of any of the comments, no one's embraced that, all right? But you've put it in, in insider trading. And the concern I have is at some point, we heard about this guy in, in New York who was an executive and he was a good guy and he was trying to save his company and, so he, he didn't gain anything, he just had his salary, but he lied and it caused millions and millions of dollars of, of, of loss. Now, if you put it in insider trading and there's no gain and you don't have a floor, this guy's looking at zero to six. All right? I, I understand why the defense community loves this. I get it. But what I'm trying to understand is, it, it, the, the reason for a floor, and, and maybe this is just a sort of, uh, gut check, it, by looking at what judges in the field are, are doing, and maybe you shouldn't use median, maybe you should average, maybe there are different ways of doing it, but the way of having a floor is some sense that that's a really serious crime, even if you didn't personally gain from it. And, and, all right? So I wanted to know how, I, 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 I'm not saying our proposal is the perfect one, it may be terrible, you know, it's why we put it out there, but, but how would you deal with the very real issue, even if it's only seven cases or over the course of 15 years, you know, a handful of cases, these fraud on the market cases where gain doesn't quite capture it and loss is so hard to figure out and at the high end's not followed anywhere? Your proposal can't fly, right? We can't be giving zero to six, or would you say that we should? Yes?
I, no, I, I agree that, I mean, it would be difficult to support a position where someone like that would get zero to six. But I think what you've done in terms of the floor is that there's no, you know, there has to be exceptions then. I mean, so there has to be a much more well-developed discussion as to, you know, as to the situations in which that floor would apply. Unfortunately, it seems that the floor would apply in the situations that we're concerned about, which is where you have someone who's gotten, you know, a very small gain in a very large conspiracy and potentially that floor is going to apply to them. And that's, that's the concern. And the real problem with fraud on the market is the lack of consideration of the market forces, right? So that's why we do support the gain, because the market forces are very, very difficult.
Suppose there's no gain and millions and millions of dollars of loss, all right? That's not, we've heard examples of that.
Right. I think, my only thing I was going to suggest is certainly there could be a, a provision put in for a departure. I mean, that, the, many things and many times the guidelines provide for those concerns by providing for reasons why a departure might be appropriate upward.
But that's what, exactly what we have now. You just want the presumption to start at zero and depart up. Right now, we have started loss and depart down. That's exactly what we have.
Well, I, I think the question is, what is the, what is the more common case that the general rule should apply to and what are the exceptions? And it seems to me, in my experience and our experience, talking with our practitioners, is that it is unusual, the, the case you described, Judge Saris, is, I think, the exception, not the rule. It is much more common in a fraud on the market case that the individuals who perpetrated the fraud on the market actually are gaining. There certainly are cases where they're not, but there's, and if that's the norm, then I think the idea is to set the guideline based on the more common set of cases and then whether it's through a departure in an unusual case, I would suggest that the case you described is an unusual case, or there are enhancements. For example, if there are cases where their victims suffered millions of dollars of losses.
But there aren't if you put it in insider trading, right?
Well, there are certain enhancements that I think could be cross-referenced.
Let me follow up on Judge Saris. I mean, I, maybe it's, maybe I come from an unusual district and I'm an unusual judge, both of which everyone in the room will agree with, but I've had at least three of these cases. And I will tell you that the losses are, are very, very hard to measure, very inexact. Everybody from Judge Easterbrook to Judge Radkoff to all over the political spectrum has said, "This situation of trying to measure the market, except in the pump-and-dump cases, is, is really inadequate. It's, it's false science. It doesn't work." However, your suggestion of putting it in the insider trading, which sounds good, bothers me because they're very different cases. Somebody working on a tip, uh, while it's improper and while it's a crime, is very different from the chief financial officer signing a statement that is filed with the SEC upon which purportedly the entire market operates on. And that's a different crime. So the idea of putting a base in there and not having the base eight, but having a substantial base in there is an attempt to try to address the issue of where you can't measure loss. But the crime is serious and therefore it's worthy of something more than zero to six. And I don't know if you want to respond to that, but that, it just seemed to me, I have a little bit of the apples and oranges when I hear about insider trading.
I, I don't disagree that, that those kinds of cases are often deserving of something more substantial than zero to six. And, you know, the ins, and I think when we suggested that those cases be sort of imported into the insider trading guideline, obviously there need to be adjustments made to the insider trading guideline to broaden it. There is a base or a floor in the insider trader guideline for an organized scheme to engage in insider trading, 14, so it's sort of the lowest of the suggested floors in the proposal. So, you know, if the commission thought there has to be some baseline, there is an analog in the insider trading guideline already. And, you know, whether you want to call it an organized scheme related to, you know, a fraud on the market or a, a false statement in a public filing, or you wanted to tie it to something with a substantial impact on the market and, and a floor there, that, you know, that wouldn't be, I think, unreasonable to address that concern. I think what, what we were particularly focused on and concerned about is, you know, a floor of something like 22 levels. When the floor starts to rise to a fairly substantial level, then I think you are introducing a certain arbitrariness that wouldn't be justified. But I think it may not be our first preference, but a, a more measured floor, a lower floor, something maybe similar to what's already in the insider trading guideline, you know, might be more of a, a reasonable compromise there.
Does any, we're, I know we're past our time for the panel. Does anyone have any other questions? I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
T. Michael Andrews, the Chair of the Victims Advisory Group. He is also the managing attorney for the D.C. Crime Victims Resource Center and an assistant professor at the University of Maryland University College in the Public Safety Department. He previously worked at the Department of Homeland Security and before that served as an Assistant U.S. Attorney in the District of Arizona. Richard Bulkin is the Chair of the Probation Officers Advisory Group. He has been a member of the Probation Officers Advisory Group since 2010. Mr. Bulkin is the Assistant Deputy Chief Probation Officer in the District of New Mexico. James E. Feldman is the Chair of the ABA's Criminal Justice Section and liaison to the Sentencing Commission. He is a named partner at, oh, I should know this, Kynes? Yeah, Kynes, Markman and Feldman in Tampa, Florida. His practice focuses on criminal matters and some related civil litigation. And Frank Bowman has taught at the University of Missouri School of Law since 2005. Before entering academia, Professor Bowman was an Assistant United States Attorney in the Southern District of Florida from 1989 to 1996. And didn't you do a brief stint at the Sentencing Commission?
I was, yes, I was, was Special Counsel to the Commission.
Thank you. We begin with Mr. Andrews. Thank you.
Thank you, and good morning to the commission and chairman. I thank you for this opportunity to come here and, and speak about a very important issue, and that is victims' rights and the impact on economic crimes on victims. But I would be remiss if I didn't say that I'm, I'm humbled to be here. I'm following the footsteps of a, a good friend of mine who served as Chair on the Victory, a Victim Advisory Group named Russell Butler, and I, I hope to follow in his footsteps and the path that he has laid out. I have submitted for the commission written testimony, and I would ask that be incorporated to, to any record that is before the commission to consider. I did briefly just want to highlight three issues that I hope we can take up in the next hour that relate to victims. The first is, as the commission is aware, victims' crime in relation to economic crime is, is tremendous. I can tell you that as a, a managing attorney who runs a, a, a crime victims, pro bono crime victims clinic, it is one of the most centered part in terms of what we deal with, with the day-to-day public, whether it's identity theft or fraud or your simple theft, the impact on victims is, is tremendous. The second, which kind of dovetails is, is our proposal. We know that one size doesn't fit all with in terms of victims, and we have proposed some options for the commission to consider to help identify those truly hard-impact victims, whether it's life-altering, substantial. whether it's life-altering, substantial. Those, I think, need to be characterized so they can cover those victims that have been hit the hardest. And then third, the psychological and trauma that also goes along with those economic crimes that impact victims. I think there should be an opportunity for the Court to consider how that impact affects those victims. Now, I'd tell you that that happens all the time, but it doesn't. But for those 1% or 2% of those victims that have that severe traumization as a result of being defrauded or impacted, that will go a long way for them to have their day in court. Again, I'd like to thank the Commission and the Chair for giving me this opportunity, and I stand ready to answer any questions that you have before me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I also would like to thank the Commission, the Commission Chair and the other Commissioners for giving me this opportunity to participate. You have our POAG's written testimony. I did want to highlight a few things. First, on the inflationary adjustment, POAG agrees that the guideline should be adjusted periodically to keep everything relative to inflation and to the value of the dollar. We think that it's people being punished today compared to people, defendants being punished 10 years ago. There, it has created an unwarranted sentencing disparity between the two. On the inflationary adjustments, we did want to point out that in the robbery guideline, the special offense characteristic that has the table of actual losses in it, we didn't see a lot of cases that had robberies involving substantial or a loss of $10,000 or more. So if we did increase that table, it would effectively do away with that. It's applied very infrequently now. I'd like to also address briefly the intended loss. We couldn't arrive at a consensus on option one or two, but the one thing that we did agree on is that in intended loss, we would be looking at a different standard than we look at currently in relevant conduct. And we believe that that could cause some confusion or misapplications by narrowing what we look at in relevant conduct and then narrowing it in what we look at in the intended loss. On the victim table, we preferred the option one. We think option two could be overly burdensome for probation officer to try to verify the substantial hardship of 25 or more individual victims. We did think that if there was a fraud case or a 2B 1.1 case where there were numerous victims substantially harmed, it could be addressed through a departure or a variance. As far as sophisticated means goes, POAG supported the Commission's version and its corresponding commentary. The one thing that we would recommend or suggest is additional examples or case scenarios in the commentary that would talk about applying sophisticated means enhancements relative to the offenses of the same kind. Once again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here today, and I'm ready to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Feldman?
Chair Saris, distinguished members of the United States Sentencing Commission. Good morning. Since 1988, I've been engaged in the private practice of federal criminal defense law with a small firm in Tampa, Florida. I am a former co-chair of your Practitioners Advisory Group, including the years 1998 to 2001, the so-called economic crime package. I'm appearing today on behalf of the American Bar Association for which I serve as Chair of the Criminal Justice Section. Thank you for letting me be here. In my more than 25 years of doing this, there are two things that have struck me. The first is the broad array of the people that I've represented who have committed these kinds of crimes. And the second is the increasing severity of the punishments that I have to advise them that they face. The first jury trial I conducted, I represented a Vice President at a bank that committed a fraud on a government program, and he learned of it, and it took him a while before he personally made the decision to stop it after reporting it to his supervisor. The bank was indicted, his supervisor and he were indicted. We went to trial, which you could do in those days. It was a pre-guidelines case, and even though we were convicted, he was convicted. The judge sentenced him to probation. It seemed a fitting result. He was disgraced. He lost his, well, his good name. He lost everything that ever meant anything to him. Of course, he never re-offended. Had it been a guidelines case, he would have been looking at six years. Today, those guidelines have more than doubled, and we would have had to sentence him to 13 years, and he would have died in prison. On the other hand, I've also represented people who are true predators, people who intend to steal money and do, and put it in their pocket and try to walk off with it, and had they, could they have stolen more, they would have. And the moral span of the people that I see is so varied, and it's quite a challenge to write a guideline that captures this variety. But unfortunately, the first guideline effort was pegged to the drug guideline in its severity, which we now recognize was too high. It was raised again multiple times over the years. The initial set of guidelines, the loss could drive your sentence by no more than a factor of five. Under the current guideline, the loss can drive your sentence by a factor of 40. Unfortunately, the amendments don't do anything about what I take to be the core severity and complexity and overemphasis on loss and not enough emphasis on culpability. In my humble opinion, this is Clemency Project 2020 waiting to happen. What I try to do about that is to assemble under the auspices of the American Bar Association a task force of the people that I most respected in this area, and we've done our best to write what we think would be a preferable guideline. But at the end of the day, we understand that the Commission's options are limited to some of what has now been published in its view, so I will address that. I would say that the assumption may be that where the culpability considerations that our task force identified but which are not in the guideline are present, the judges depart. And I know that you all see that judges depart from the guidelines. What I want to emphasize is that not all judges do that. There are judges out there who look at what you do as sacrosanct, and they don't depart, generally speaking, unless there's really an overwhelming reason to, and something that you all have indicated is okay. What doesn't happen is judges departing for no good reason. That is not happening. And that is why I urge you to consider the expansion of the application note regarding the circumstances in which a downward departure may be appropriate, so that judges who are confronted with these culpability considerations have been essentially told by the Commission, "These are legitimate considerations. You could craft it as narrowly as you need to. You can make it that judges have to articulate why they're doing what they're doing." I don't see frivolous departures. What I see are judges who are not comfortable departing because this Commission has not yet said that it would be appropriate. I do think that, though, that the standard should not be whether the guideline is broken or not. It should be whether it can be improved, and I think this application would improve it. And I think that judges do indicate their dissatisfaction at a lower point in the loss table. When I look at the Commission's data briefing, it seems to me that the rate of non-government below-range sentences goes to 30% at $30,000, and it stays there pretty much flat across the table. And the extent of the variance hits 25% at around $120,000, and that percentage stays pretty constant. So I do have things to say about the specific amendments that the guideline has proposed, but I see that the red light is on, so I'll wait to respond to questions on those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Professor Bowman?
I want to thank Judge Saris and the members of the Commission for your kind invitation to me to testify here today. It's always a pleasure to come back and talk to old friends at the Commission and to make new ones. By curious coincidence, it's almost exactly 20 years since I was serving as Special Counsel to the United States Sentencing Commission on detail from the Justice Department. And Andy Purdy, who was then, I think, Deputy General Counsel to the Commission, came to me and asked me to begin thinking with him and others about how loss might be better defined and how the economic crime guidelines could be improved. That conversation sucked me into the maw of 2B 1.1 from which I've never completely escaped. Jim and I have been in that maw together for almost a quarter of a century. Now, I'm not going to repeat here the long story of how 2B 1.1 was created as a consolidation of the then-separate fraud and theft guidelines or the effect of the Sarbanes-Oxley Act on what we produced. I've laid all that out in my written testimony and several tedious law review articles which you're at liberty to read. Instead, I will merely say that while much of what we did back then made good sense, with respect to the sentences prescribed certainly for the most serious economic offenses, we screwed up. And that screw-up was promptly exacerbated by Congress and the Commission in the grip of the moral panic that was caused by Enron and the wave of corporate scandals of that period. And the basic structural error, the way we screwed up, arises from the interaction of three factors. The logarithmic structure of the sentencing table, the loss table, which now adds so very many offense levels for high-loss cases, and the number of specific offense characteristics and role adjustments that are customarily applicable to these very same cases. And the result of that structural error is that the guidelines, if honestly applied, and I emphasize "if honestly applied," routinely generate sentencing ranges that neither judges nor anyone else takes seriously. Now, I was therefore gratified to read Judge Saris's statement accompanying the current round of proposed amendments to 2B 1.1, in which she suggests that the economic crime guidelines for cases with less than $1 million in loss seem to be okay, but that sentences for what she refers to as, quote, "the highest dollar values over $1 million in loss do not," as she said, "hew fairly closely to the guidelines." And I inferred from that statement that the Commission recognized the problem with high-loss cases, which is to say, a loss table that is pitched too high, interacting with a host of SoCs and role adjustments. And I assumed, therefore, that the Commission would propose amendments this cycle to fix it. To my surprise, and I think to the surprise of a fair number of folks, that's not what's been proposed here. There are only two proposed amendments that would, I think, really affect the sentences of high-loss offenders, the proposed inflation adjustment, even if that's not why you meant to do it, and the reduction in the size of the multiple victim enhancement. Neither of those would, of course, affect all high-loss defendants, and neither would change the guideline ranges of those that they do affect very much. Now, I can only surmise that the Commission doesn't really believe that there's a problem with high-loss cases. And I've been kind of puzzling over how that could be so. Indeed, like the Grinch, I have puzzled and puzzled until my puzzler is sore. Now, you'll be able to tell me if I'm right about this, but what I think may have happened is that you may perhaps have been misled by or perhaps may have misinterpreted your own data. And here's what I imagine you, at least some of you, to be thinking. You recognize that there are some cases in which the fraud guidelines, if honestly applied, generate unrealistically high sentences, cases where the offense levels end up being multiple levels higher than the 43 required for a life sentence, cases where in consequence guidelines treat stealing as orders of magnitude worse than murder. And you recognize also, I assume, that even below that stratospheric improbability, there are cases where the guidelines prescribe multi-decade sentences for people who don't deserve it. But perhaps you think that those, that such cases are rare and therefore of not much systemic concern. Why might you think that? Well, that's a bit hard for me to figure, because if we take Judge Saris's benchmark of cases over $1 million in loss as being the problem, we find that, at least as of 2012, the data set that was analyzed by your staff, there are actually 1,444 such cases, a full 17% of all the fraud cases sentenced that year under 2B 1.1. And parenthetically, by the way, from the point of view of the loss table itself, eight of the 16 steps on the loss table concern loss more than $1 million. So half of the loss table and 17% of the actual cases fall into the presumptively problem category. Therefore, you must be thinking, I guess, that only a few of the 1,400 cases over $1 million are really a problem, and you may perhaps be supporting that conclusion in a number of ways. First, you might think, "Well, everybody's telling us that a big part of the problem is the interaction of the loss table with specific offense characteristics that correlate with large loss. But the staff is showing us statistics that say most of the high-loss cases have very few SoCs. So the thing that everybody's complaining about really isn't a problem most of the time." But as I point out in some detail in my written statement, those statistics are, if I may be so blunt, plainly bogus. Not that they don't accurately report what is showing up in PSIs, they do. But what shows up in the PSI in a plea bargain case, which is to say 98% of all federal cases, is what the parties have agreed to. And what your own statistics show you, if you look at them carefully, is that in high-loss cases, the parties are plainly bargaining away all or most of the applicable SoCs. If you take a look, for example, at Figure 8 of the staff data briefing, which shows that in cases over $1 million, 47% of the defendants in that category supposedly engaged in no conduct that triggered even a single SoC, and another 33% engaged in conduct which only triggered one, that's obviously baloney. Nobody believes that, as anyone who's ever handled any cases like that can tell you. It's just not possible to commit frauds of that size without triggering at least one and most times multiple SoCs. So what's happening? Well, plainly, the parties are bargaining away routinely most of the SoCs in high-loss cases, because applying the guidelines honestly to the facts of those cases would generate sentences that no defendant would agree to plead to and frankly, very few judges would agree to impose. But interestingly, even then, after the parties have essentially rigged the outcome, judges are still declining to impose the suggested sentences to an ever-increasing extent as loss amounts go up from $1 million, as Figure 6 of the briefing shows. Now, I'm about to finish here, but the second data point at which you may be relying in concluding that not much needs to be done is the survey of the judges in which they express generalized satisfaction with the guidelines for most cases. But I'd suggest to you that that general conclusion shouldn't really afford you much comfort. In the first place, in discussing high-loss cases, cases more than $1 million, we're by definition only talking about 17% of the cases. So the fact that the judges are happy with most of the cases most of the time isn't really, really isn't germane. But more to the point, the phenomenon of rampant factor bargaining in high-loss cases means that judges are rarely confronted with the implications of the current guidelines honestly applied. And as an advisory regime, even when they are confronted with a guidelines calculation they're uncomfortable with, they can and do blithely ignore it. But none of this, I think, should give you, as a sentencing commission, any comfort at all. If the data shows, as I think it plainly does, that you are stewards of guidelines which, for an identifiable class of defendants, are so out of whack that all of the parties of the system routinely evade them in order to achieve sentencing outcomes they can live with, then I don't think the proper response for you to say is, "Well, in effect, no harm, no foul." Rather, it ought to be to alter the applicable guidelines so that lawyers and judges can take them seriously as meaningful guides to what proper sentences in high-loss cases ought to be. Now, I know my time has long since passed, so I'm not going to talk about the particular measures that I'd suggested that you might use to try to bring about that end, but I'd be happy to do so in the questioning period.
Thank you.
Mr. Feldman, you wanted to address some specific proposals, and I'd like you to do that.
Thank you. Well, the adjustment for inflation for the reasons stated better than I could by the Commissioners seems a good idea. I think it's frankly adjusting not just for economic inflation, but in my view, at least, adjusting for political inflation. This is something that ought to be done. The victim piece, I do think, should be limited to economic harms. Once you get into non-economic harms, and there's already an upward departure provision there for unusual non-economic harm, these are things the parties don't know. Generally, prosecutors are looking for how they're going to prove my client's guilt. They're not looking into what are the non-economic emotional harms that the victims might have suffered. So when we sit down to plea bargain a case, neither of us know what the guidelines are going to be. And I think when you put into the guideline facts that the parties don't know, it's problematic. And frankly, I think is going to be the subject of a lot of collateral litigation. And bear in mind, you're in a system where there are no rules. There's no discovery- There's no discovery here. The government's not going to have to give me anything about these victims. I don't know how I'm going to litigate what their non-economic harms are. So I think for a lot of reasons, it ought to be kept to the economic harms. Bear in mind that in Chapter 3, you already have an adjustment for vulnerable victims.
I jump in. Do you get that information about the economic harms and the bargaining?
No.
So you're not getting any of it?
At least the prosecutor could know it. And sometimes, I mean, there are no rules of discovery at all, frankly, governing sentencing, so they don't have to tell me what the discovery is on any of these.
Under 6A 1.3, you're entitled to a hearing if you want to dispute it, if it's a material thing. And are you saying the judges wouldn't direct the prosecutor to present in a discovery format that type of evidence that he or she is going to rely on for the sentencing hearing?
Some judges may, but it's at a point in the process where it's after we've already tried to negotiate the resolution of the case. So what I'm saying is it works better as a system when the parties to the negotiation know the relevant facts. But I also think that frankly, the victim issue could be dealt with much more simply. You already have an adjustment in Chapter 3 where the victims are vulnerable. And then you have an additional adjustment on top of that for a large number of vulnerable victims. I think in the ordinary case, the reason "loss" is being used is to measure harm. We're not measuring loss for the sake of measuring loss. We're doing it to measure relative culpability of different defendants who commit these crimes. Ordinarily, the amount of the loss ought to reflect the impact on the victims. So it seems to me that in an advisory system, as opposed to a binding system, we can be more general here. And we could say something to the effect that where there is unusual victim impact, either in terms of number or effect on an individual or group of individual victims, increase by plus 2, or plus 3, or whatever you want to do there. But you could combine both concepts, put it in an adjustment, and put a number on it. But you don't need to worry about vulnerability, because that's in Chapter 3, and you don't need large numbers of vulnerable, because that's in Chapter 3. And ordinarily, in most cases, the loss ought to do it. So that was my thinking about the victims. I think we're still stuck in a binding mindset where we think we have to lay everything out in so much detail, and this is a plus 2 and that's a 4, and we're just not there anymore. On the sophisticated means, I obviously would want to see that tightened up. I see it basically as a trial penalty often. If you go to trial, it was sophisticated. If I'm bargaining, they're willing to say, okay, if you plead, it's not. And that's just not how the system ought to be. I would note that Section 2, the aiding and abetting statute, does use the word "cause." So the idea of causes is not totally foreign to us. And so I don't know whether the defender language is what the Commission would want to use, but I don't think the idea of cause would be a new thought. On the fraud on the market, I didn't have a specific suggestion in terms of whether it should or shouldn't go to the insider trading piece. I don't think it'd be a 0 to 6, because you'd get the role adjustment, you'd get the number of victim adjustments, you'd get the sophisticated mean adjustments, if you use those to cross-reference over. I just had the same concern that the floor, if it's set too high, it's like a mandatory minimum. I mean, now, all of a sudden, judges' hands are tied based on one consideration, where we all know there's a rich mix of circumstances that might be appropriate. So if you're going to use floors, I think you want to use them carefully and not set them so high that it has some of the same defects that we see with mandatory minimums. In terms of intended loss...
So what should it be?
Well, I mean, I guess the suggestion was 14. You know, I think that gets you jail, and then you go up from there for leadership role and number of victims and things like that.
That's not very empirical, is it?
No, it's just as empirical as everything else.
Actually, the Commission did look at the data of what judges are sentencing now. The Commission is looking at empirical data to come up with a number.
In that case, I withdraw my suggestion. It's based on...
No, not too fast.
I mean, in any event, you have to understand, when I answer a question like that, it's not on behalf of the American Bar Association, for certain. It's just me talking. The only thing I was going to say about intended loss is that the idea that we would treat losses that are solely in the mind of a person as hoping they would come about identically with actual loss is really problematic to me. I mean, I see cases where the loss happened, and they took the money. My clients, if they're predators, they intend all the loss in the world, but it isn't going to happen. And so you really shouldn't wait. Intended loss, the same as actual loss. If you're going to do it, crank it back as tight as you can. At least make it be the losses that are intended by the defendant. When you get into losses that are solely in the minds of somebody else, even if they're reasonably foreseeable, which these days everything is with the benefit of hindsight, you're really risking unwarranted disparity between the true predators and the mopes, if you will. So I think that intended loss was always intended to be subjective, but it would be improved if it was limited to the defendant's individual subjective.
Thank you. I was going to jump in and ask Professor Bowman. I enjoyed reading your remarks, because you've been in the trenches trying to figure it out. And I noticed how many times you said, "I went down that rabbit hole, and now I've changed my mind." So it's been a very difficult area, and I noticed the Department of Justice has sort of embraced your tweak of lopping off the...
I was stunned. Delighted, but stunned.
Lopping off the top ends. But let me ask you, there's always the issue that we have of directives. And there is a directive, which is not a mandatory one, but a discretionary one, but Congress asked us to ensure that the guideline offense levels and enhancements under 2B 1.1 are sufficient for a fraud offense when the number of victims adversely involved is significantly greater than 50. And so one of the things that your piece doesn't address is the role of directives. Congress has been so active in this area, so that, let's say you lop off some, I'm not saying we are, but you lop off some amounts, you've recommended this, but then the big issue is the victim table. You struggle with that. Should it be quantitative? Should it be qualitative? Should it be some combination of the two? But Congress is quite interested in actually having us think a little bit about the number of victims over 50, at least Congress thinks is more than one victim. So how would you, you know, you said that you haven't yet dealt with specific proposals, but we're right there, specific proposals. If you lopped off a certain amount or whatever, is the Department of Justice is willing to take the tweak? What do you do with these victim tables?
Well, first of all, I would support the Commission's proposal to reduce the number of levels associated with the number of victims. I think that's a good idea to start with, particularly because of the whole logarithmic effect as we go up, particularly at high levels. I mean, a six-level increase essentially doubles your sentence, which is, I think, so 250 victims doubles your sentence, which I think is crazy. So dropping that down, I think, makes good sense in the first instance. I guess, and here, I think maybe I'll pick up on something that Mr. Feldman just said, and that is that I think particularly in an advisory era, I think maybe the Court, or the Commission, should continue to, or should begin to think about adding provisions to the guidelines that are more in the nature of guidance. So, for example, one could say, with respect to either number of victims, or for that matter, with respect to victims who have suffered some sort of qualitative degree of harm, you might say, rather than adding or subtracting offense levels, you might put in a provision that essentially suggests a departure or suggests that, for example, the presence of a certain number of victims over, say, a level of 50 would be a factor the judge might consider in sentencing at the top end of the advisory range. I mean, that's something we, actually, for decades now, we've forgotten the fact that there are ranges, right? I mean, there's a bottom end that basically most judges seem to sentence at most of the time, but there's a whole range in here. And the Commission has generally not given much in the way of guidance about where a judge might want to sentence in that range. So if you want to talk about that, rather than adding another two levels, or three, or six, or 10, or whatever it is, you might say, well, this is a factor that a judge should consider within the range, or the judge could consider as a departure, rather than ramping up the number of levels. And I think particularly in this guideline, rife as it is with all of these SoCs, with their logarithmic effect in high-loss cases, I think you should be very, very reluctant to be adding any new SoCs at all. It not only adds complexity, but in cases over $1 million, it's almost always going to have a huge multiplying effect on the ultimate guideline range.
Thank you. With Judge, Professor Barco, and then John...
So my question is somewhat related to this, which is, well, maybe not entirely. So it's the question of how much we do that's specific to the fraud guideline versus how it relates to the rest of the manual. So this is really for you, Mr. Feldman, because of the ABA proposal. But part of what the ABA proposal really focused on was this idea of, you know, what it called culpability, or you might think of as mens rea. And that's just not the way the manual overall approaches sentencing, right? So the ABA has a really interesting proposal that is grounded in fundamental concepts of culpability in criminal law, and yet, it's not the approach of the manual. And so, you know, one issue is, is there a reason that, you know, fraud gets the special culpability treatment, right? But we don't do it for drug quantity. We don't say, what was your mens rea with respect to the quantity of the drugs? You know, it is what it is. And that would be the way it would work with the whole rest of the manual. So, you know, so one issue, I think, that at least I have, I won't speak for anybody else, is, you know, how to think about piecemeal fixing of the guideline manual versus issues that are broader. And then, you know, Professor Bowman's point is about the logarithmic nature of the table. You know, it may have particularly pernicious effects when it meets this particular guideline, but that's true for everything, because that's the way the whole table works. And so, you know, one issue is just whether you have given any thought to the fraud context as being specifically the place to tackle these, or whether they're so fundamental that really those kinds of issues have to be the big think thing that the Commission does as it rethinks a guideline regime in an advisory world. Because it just seems like some of these transcend the specifics of fraud.
There were two areas in particular that our test force just couldn't get away from the obvious comparison. The first was drugs, because that guideline is driven by quantity, just as the fraud guideline is driven by loss. And the other area in which we have strong ABA policy are the child pornography guidelines, where there are instances where you could get more time for looking at pictures than actually molesting the child, as I understand it. So without question, there may be aspects of this manual that could dramatically be improved by a wholesale revision. Now, I don't do a lot of bank robberies or immigration. There may be similar places...
Glad to know that.
Well, not personally, yeah. But there may be other places in the manual. But my sense is that the reason that the fraud guideline is such a great place to start, and we need to start somewhere unless you want to start on it all, I mean, I guess one approach could say, well, I don't want to do anything until I'm doing it all, but I don't know that you have to take that approach. I think you could start here and say, let's see how it works, is because peculiarly, I think that this guideline captures a much broader array of not only types of offenses, but at least in my judgment, types of offenders. And so I think that it does lend itself to a fundamental rework, and I don't think you have to wait to write the whole book. But obviously, there are other parts of the book that, as you point out, I think are exactly the same sorts of issues.
I suppose if that question was partly directed to me, I mean, I think I'd probably share much of what Jim's had to say with the addition that, assuming you're going to start somewhere, maybe whether it's to go the ABA direction or to simply try some things in this guideline that you haven't tried elsewhere, it's not a bad place to start, right? I mean, there's two approaches. You can try to, if you're going to try to reinvent the universe, I mean, you're going to sort of start in a small corner of the universe and see how it works out. Or you can try to do, you know, go back to the beginning and do the whole seven days thing. Maybe it's not a bad idea to start in one corner of the universe and see if your ideas actually, you know, play out in practice. And I think there's some areas that you could experiment on here that would make sense. And moreover, I think the problem, in my view, the top end of the guideline is so fouled up right now that you really need to do, you need to do something, and more than you're doing.
All right, thank you. We're going to go down. Everybody has questions?
Yeah, so I'll try to be quick. For Mr. Feldman, the ABA proposal specifically directs judges to consider non-economic harm. So can you explain that with your testimony? And then for Professor Bowman, you were around in 2001, when the Commission did a tremendous amount of research, of empirical analysis, of public hearings, and decided to amend the loss table, lowering the loss table in some areas and raising the loss table in other areas, looking at all the purposes of sentencing, balancing them out, coming up with something. If the Commission decides to make an inflationary adjustment, can you, first of all, explain what the Commission did, and whether you agree or disagree with me? And if the Commission makes an inflationary adjustment, why should it go back before 2001 at a time when the Commission examined all the purposes of sentencing and made adjustments considering all of the aspects of sentencing they're supposed to consider?
So I don't think there's any inconsistency in what I'm saying. The task force approach to victims was to say, look, counting the number of them doesn't make any sense. Let's look at what happened to them. And so we came up with just general categories of victim impact: minimal, low, moderate, high, something like that, off the top of my head. And it was based on a mix of all information, including potentially extreme, non-economic harm. But it's much more of an advisory kind of an approach. I think that here, these guidelines, if you're going to stick, you know, we're only going to look at what the impact was, and it's going to be a plus 2, and that's it, well, then we ought to keep that to economic impact and leave these other unusual circumstances to upward variances or upward departures, which are already there. That's been in the book for a long time and which ought to stay there. So I don't think there's a difference of approach there.
Great, thank you.
With us, I think that there was a question addressed to me as well. Well, Commissioner Roblowski, I think with respect to what happened in 2001, I might disagree with you a little bit about what we did in 2001 in terms of the loss table, because your characterization of it, I think, is that it gives the idea that perhaps it was a little more systematic and perhaps scientifically based than I think it was. I think it was more, I mean, there was certainly some considerations of purposes of sentencing and so forth. But I think what happened with the loss table was also an awful lot of horse trading, with various of the players wanting different things. And what we got was a loss table which increased, you know, the table at the top and decreased a little bit at the bottom. And my own personal sense, and I don't know if Jim has a different one, is that that was primarily the outcome of a bunch of horse trading rather than a whole heck of a lot of really scientific thought. The other thing that I think is clear about that, which I put in my written testimony, is that the trouble with what happened in 2001 with respect to the guideline as a whole is that the processes, that the 2001 economic crime package proceeded essentially on two tracks. On the one track, there were the people who were worried about severity, and they were working on the loss table. And on the other hand, there were the people who were worried about sort of loss definition. That was mostly what I did. And the trouble is that the two sides of those, the two tracks basically didn't intersect very much. We didn't really think very carefully about what would happen when you took the increased loss table and you put together with what we were doing on the loss and reconfiguration of definition side. Very few people actually sat down to figure out what the intersection of those things would do, except for Jim, who did point that out. And with respect to your last question is, you know, should you go back before 2001? I mean, I take your point, which is, these numbers were considered by horse trading or scientifically in 2001, and they were set at that point. Does it make sense to go back historically before that? Probably not.
Having been there in...
We just need to make sure we get through...
I may one comment. I would say to this Commission that which I said to the Commission in 2001, because we could see what this meant. History will judge this period as a time in which we experimented for the first time with the imprisonment of non-violent first-time offenders for periods previously reserved only for those who had killed someone. This is Clemency Project 2020 waiting to happen.
Thank you. Judge Breyer.
I'd like to ask you, Mr. Andrews, representative, in your submission, you recommend, you say vag recommendation, option 3 on page 2, with respect to victims. And I was impressed by your choice of words, because you say victim impact, you say substantial, you say if the offense resulted in significant financial or other hardship to one or more victims. And you use the term "or other hardship." So I think maybe there's a consensus on this, maybe not quite, but almost, that that would then capture people who are victims of identity theft, where they may not have lost any money, but they're spending years trying to straighten out their financial credit or their credit. Is that, was that your intention? Are those the words, the so-called magic words, that one would put in this in order to capture that type of conduct?
That's exactly, that's exactly right. You know, we're living in the reality of the different types of economic crime victims today that are a lot different, perhaps, than earlier on. And so, and it is tough to capture all the possible type of victims out there that are being harmed by predators out there. So you're exactly right. We try to make it at least as open, so folks can fall right into those.
Thank you.
Judge Breyer.
So I have good news and bad news.
So I have good news and bad news, Professor Bowman. The good news is, at least speaking for me, is that what you imagined we thought isn't what we thought.
Well, that's good, I guess.
So the bad news is, perhaps we just haven't figured out a good way to deal with the 15% problem. So we have a guideline that for 85% of the offenders, the judges think, think works most of the time. And for 15%, it doesn't. And maybe we just haven't figured out a good way of dealing with that in a way that we would have to explain to Congress is something different from just lowering punishments for the fraudsters who caused the most harm, at least in dollar amounts.
I mean, if I might respond to that, I mean, I, one of the things, I think you, I think you can fix it. I think there are a number of ways to do that. You just have to work careful. I think what you have to, I've suggested some mechanisms by which I think you can bring sentences for that 15% back within a reasonable range. And I guess one of the things I would say, and I'm, I guess, I'm a little puzzled by, even though I spent 10 years in the Department of Justice, I'm a little puzzled by the department's apparent resistance to the kinds of things that might change that. If I'm an AUSA in a high-loss case, I'd really like some guidelines that, when we run the calculations honestly, not jiggering the numbers, but honestly, you come up with a sentence that I can walk in front of any of you as judges and say, "Judge, this, the guidelines, which the commission seriously means, they really thought about this, prescribes 20 years for this joker, and I want you to impose that 20 years." And nobody's kidding you. We really mean that. The commission means that, and you know they mean that. I'd want that. So why the Justice Department seems to be so deeply reluctant to adjustments that would produce that outcome is a little bit of a surprise to me. In terms of selling it to Congress, if that's the thing, that, to me, is the way to sell it, right? We want guidelines that we can actually take seriously and therefore that judges will use to impose serious penalties on serious offenders.
I can only speak for myself, but you know, there may be a lot of sympathy on the part of some of us about how we rethink the guidelines in an advisory world. But starting or isolating, starting with or isolating the fraud guideline from the larger perspective that we have to deal with, I think is a hard sell.
Do we have any other questions at this point? I just, I had a question for you, Professor Bowman. You suggest a cap, basically, of cumulative effect of all the SoCs at 10. That's, your proposals, it actually...
Right.
While I get it, it still would often bring a 20 to 30-year sentence.
Right. I mean, I actually...
I know that your proposals aren't doing much more than, many of these, the stat cap is about there anyway, regardless of whether it's hitting at 43, you've got a 30-year statutory max.
I am not wedded to the 10. As a matter of fact, after I, you know, after I wrote that and I sent it off, I said, "You know, that's probably too high." Because what, I think what we should, here's the last thing I would say, I guess. I think what all of us, and I think what the commissions should learn to think in terms of is not offense levels, but multiples of, you know, sentencing. That is to say, when you say, "Let's add, let's add a two-level enhancement," realize when you say that, you just increased somebody's...
So that's the logarithm effect.
Pardon?
That's what, the real objection here, and we've talked about this and struggled with it, and, and yeah, a very good argument could be made that it's not appropriate to have a logarithm effect, because adding x doesn't correspond to twice the harm, four times the harm, 10 times the harm. So isn't that really what's going on here? You're saying, "Look, I want to put in some caps," because it's the caps that can possibly ameliorate the adverse impact of the logarithm effect, not the harm effect, but the logarithm effect. Isn't that what you're saying?
Right. And I'm saying that because unless either Congress steps in and amends the enabling legislation to eliminate the so-called 25% rule, or you as a commission decide that you're going to revisit the interpretation of that statute, which was made by this commission many years ago, so that you don't believe that's true anymore, you're stuck with the logarithm. So I make the proposal, not because I think in a perfect world, it's the best thing to do, maybe if you were reinventing the world. What I'm saying is, you're stuck with that. So if you're dealing with a set of cases, the top 15%, and when you know that you're starting out at a very high number, because you've got $1 million, or $5 million, or $7 million of loss, ask yourself, "How much more than that should any specific offense characteristic ever multiply somebody's sentence?" And I think you ought to be able to arrive at some conclusion about that. Twice, one time, two times, three times? And if you figure out what that number is, there's a cap.
Another way that I'll ask it sometimes in advocating for a departure is, "Is my client's crime really that much worse because of x? What would the penalty be just based on the loss? And then how much have we tacked on?" Because each one adds on top of the other. And then also, what else could he have done and still scored the same? You have to look at the rest of your manual. And half the time, my client could have poisoned the public water supply and scored lower. So you need to also look at it in terms of what else is in the rest of the manual by the time you've piled all these things on.
You wouldn't advise him to do that, though?
I haven't yet.
All right, well, any other questions? Thank you very much.